Okay, we're going to call our public hearing to order. Zoning case number 2022-07MA. Major adjustment to an existing PUD. Scott, do you want to kick it off?
Yes, sir. Sorry for the chime. All right. This is case number 2022-07MA. Our applicant is Kenwood Swim Club LLC. This is a major adjustment to an existing PUD located at 8261 and 8271 Pine Road. The property is Zone 00, that's Planned Office. With the area highlighted in red is the location of this future development. To the south is East Calworth Road with the Stub Street Pine Road being predominantly an office development with multifamily to the east side in part as well as other office users. We have to the north and to the west, we have C, single-family residential and more Planned Office, 00 to the south of the subject parcel. The site is 1.7 acres net without the right-of-way with 425 feet of frontage on Pine Road. Okay? Proposed ISR for the site is .683. Giving you a little bit of background into the site, but we're not actually here to talk about the site design. We already have a PUD on this site that I think maybe two of us up here on the data are that we're actually here for those cases. But the site plans have been approved through both original PUDs and zone change as well as some minor adjustments. Today, we're here to talk about just the addition of a use. So, the applicant is seeking to modify an approved PUD which was originally approved in 2003 to allow for the additional use of a private recreation facility, in this case, a swim school. Okay? This is the current approved plan for Pine Road. There are two single-story office buildings on this site, each grossing approximately 9,000 square feet with a net square footage totaling, I believe, 14,400 square feet. The Kenwood Swim School is proposing to purchase the northernmost building in its entirety for its sole use as a swim school. The exterior elevations of both buildings would be the same and there will be no, there are no, excuse me, no proposed alterations to the aesthetic of the building because of the swim school. So, this is a predominantly brick-faced, single-story with the residential-style sloped shingle roof. The typical layout for the office was going to be up to four units with two of those units facing to the front of the building and two side access points for the other units. These are highly configurable modular, so the final layout of the second building, the office building, is still up in the air as users are signed on.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that the collection of both of those buildings was 14,400 square feet?
That'd be net. So, they are, they total 18,000, yes, 18,000 square feet.
Right.
So, the applicant is saying that net would be 14,400.
Of this building or both?
No, of both.
Okay.
So, this would be, this would be a 9,000-square-foot building for the swim school.
Got you. Okay.
Sorry, I was saying...
I misunderstood you on that.
Yep. In the applicant's plans, they will, we can turn over to that and show you. I'm showing you a typical office layout. The swim school obviously is going to be different. I believe there is a 27 or 2800-square-foot pool that would potentially be fully enclosed by the building, approximately four feet in depth all the way through with associated locker rooms, viewing areas for, you know, family members, parents, and as well as some offices for the employees and staff. I'll switch over to the swim school floor plans here in a minute, but I'll go ahead and finish this with staff comments. Zoning commission did review this case, I believe, on April 11th of last month. It was passed unanimously by zoning commission with the following conditions. Number one, except as noted below, all aspects of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution shall be adhered to, including but not limited to freestanding signs, dumpster enclosures, street skate buffers, sight lighting, off-street parking requirements, and mechanical equipment. This is a holdover from prior cases. Number two, no outdoor advertising. Billboards or telecommunication towers shall be permitted on the site. Number three, exterior signage shall conform to the O zoning district provisions of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. This is simply because this application did not come with any signed details. Okay? And then finally, number four, there must be zero foot candles or light spill at the north and west property lines as previously required. Again, another layover from prior approvals. Trying not to jump around and steal the applicant's thunder too much.
So, Scott, you say that the swim club is going to enter into a shared parking agreement with the other...
There is, yes. So, the parking on this site is proposed to be shared. With that being said, I did do some initial calculations. Let me pull that up here. So, you know, when we're looking at office buildings, we're looking at general office, medical office. Medical office has the more strict parking requirements. So, based on that, the site would be approved because it would require a minimum of 72 parking spaces and the site's providing 94. So, looking at the swim facilities specifically, they require one parking space for each 50 square feet of pool area plus one per employee. The swim school would require 42 spaces based on discussions with the applicant. And if we are looking at, that'd be 42 plus employee parking. So, if we say 50, the 72 parking spaces was on the assumption of both buildings being office. So, if we cut that in half, 72 goes down to 36. And if we're saying 50, we're at 86 required spaces for the site and they're still providing 94 spaces. So, we're comfortable with the parking arrangement.
And I guess you're saying that most of the, or the majority of the time, they're going to actually be night?
It would be, yes, there would be peak hours for the swim school either in the evening or on the weekends opposite of your typical office users.
Let me just make sure I understand correctly. If both buildings there were used for medical use, there would still be enough parking for that also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Right, yeah.
So, if we look at the most strict requirements, there's more than enough parking.
Right. Perfect. Okay.
Anybody who's going to testify in this hearing, please raise your right hand, stand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay. So, my name's Jen. I'm the area manager for Goldfish Swim School here in Cincinnati. We currently have two locations operating in West Chester and Anderson Township. So, this is just going to be a little bit about who we are as a brand and why we are a great fit for the Sycamore Township area. So, our core focus is to teach children how to be safer in and around the water while making their experience golden. And our core values, we go above and beyond with every detail to create a golden experience. We believe in nurturing a culture that provides wow customer service. We do the right things, make the right decisions, and treat people with integrity, compassion, and trust. We meet and exceed expectations to use the extraordinary results, and we make a big deal about life's accomplishments by remembering to celebrate. So, our first step is to create jobs for the community. We employ a wide demographic of employees anywhere from high school to college students, moms, parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, anywhere in between, looking for either part-time or full-time work. So, our general hours, this was mentioned a little bit already, we do operate typically 9:00 AM to 8:30 PM, but a bulk of our hours on the weekdays occurring from 3:30 to 8:30 PM once children are out of school. And then on the weekends, 9:00 AM to 6:30 with most of those operating hours falling more toward the mornings with the evenings being reserved for things like open swim and birthday parties. So, 70% of our business is actually done during those weekday hours as well as those weekend times, so it is very complementary to the office use that we will be sharing Our swim lessons are built on the science of swim play, which is the idea that children learn best through guided play. So, our lessons are fun and engaging while also structured and very educational for the kids to learn to swim in a safe and fun manner. All of our instructors are lifeguard certified. We keep our class size small, so it's four students to one instructor for that optimal instruction as well as social engagement with our children. We offer year-round swim lessons for kids four months to 12 years old of all abilities. So, we're very inclusive in the design of our swim lessons based on age and skill level. And then our curriculum is focused on teaching kids to be safe in the water. So, it's not only swim-based, but it's also safety-based as well. We teach them about lifeguard safety, not swimming alone, wearing life jackets, all those things that make a safe swimmer in the water. We also offer flexible scheduling. We're designed to be built around families and their needs, so makeup lessons, changing their day and time when they need to, allowing to pause swim lessons if they pick up another sport activity. We're very family-oriented in our business model. And our customer profile, we target kids zero to nine years old with a parental income of $150,000 plus. Parents typically are ages 34 to 45 and typically are college educated and above. When we open a location in this area, we always do a grand opening party. This party is designed to get new members in the door, let them check out our facility as well as can make connections with local businesses, invite them to our grand opening party to advertise and bring the community all together in one event. And it's just a fun, family-friendly activity for all. So, we have our mascot Bubbles. He's the goldfish. He's a cute, family-friendly face for our kids. We bring him as a mascot to events. He goes to local schools for different presentations. He goes to community outings, sometimes makes an appearance at swim lessons for the kids. He's also in our swim lessons in the form of waterproof bath toys and available for purchase in our retail area in a plush form as well. So, he's just a cute, friendly face. We also do water safety presentations, so this is a free part of our business that we go out to local schools. We also invite scouting troops into our facility is a big one to learn about water safety. We go through the letters of water to spell out educational information on water safety. It's completely free of charge and we go out to schools as well as bring them into our facility for a little bit of fun swim time, too. We have Ryan Murphy who's our brand ambassador. He's an Olympic swimmer and has partnered with us to help promote safer swimming for We also are partnered with the USA Swimming Foundation, so this is a philanthropic arm that we have that we are partnered with. Our Anderson location is actually approved for a grant this year, so we are given money to allow kids who have lower income may not have access to swim lessons at our higher price point to come in and receive those high-quality swim lessons through a grant program. So, our Anderson location received that and we also do fundraising efforts throughout the year to fund the program as well. And our school is typically average 6,000 to 9,000 square feet. We've got some minimum requirements we typically might like to meet as well, which this facility should meet that. We've got all of our water, sewer, plumbing, electrical, all that. Our pool is 25 feet wide, 75 feet long, and four feet deep. We heat the pool to 90 degrees, so it's nice and warm. It's like a bath time for kids in there. And we have a state-of-the-art water purification system to basically use salt to chlorinate our pool, so it goes through a chlorine generator. So, the water's a lot softer on the kids' skin and eyes. The viewing area for parents is air-conditioned, so they're not on that warm pool deck sweating, watching their kids learn to swim or listening to the loud pool, anything like that. They have a great view, but it's definitely comfortable for parents. And then we have specific vendors for all of our signage and materials, so every goldfish location looks the same when you walk through those doors.
Is it as cold as in here?
No, it is much warmer. So, these are some school locations that have been completed across the US. As you can see, they vary in shape and size, but on the inside, they typically all look very similar. So, these are a few sample blueprints from other locations. You can see the layout here of how we have the pool set up as well as private changing huts. So, we don't necessarily have a locker room configuration. It's more changing room style like a dressing room you would find in like a retail store. This allows mixed families to come in, you know, dad with their daughter, mom with their son. They don't have to worry about gendered bathrooms or anything like that. It's all very family-friendly and comfortable for all of our members.
I think there's a couple layouts, yeah.
Yeah, so you can just see different configurations of how we lay out the changing rooms, where the front desk is located, how many offices we use, that sort of thing. So, why Goldfish? You may be asking, why is this a great fit for the community? And there's a few reasons why we believe that. And that is because we are proven to be successful. All of our locations have a really great net promoter score, so we have reviews that give us that feedback that verify that we are a great swim school in this community. We're a first-class experience all around. Like I said, our experience and our goal is to make that experience golden for all of our members. And we're a premier brand in the industry, so we are top-notch and we have nationwide recognition as a learn-to-swim program. As a franchise, we have 10 years of franchising experience. There's 100-plus schools and open operating locations. And then that is just something less than 1% of all franchisors successfully do. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Any questions?
No, I was just going to say, are you buying or leasing the building?
We are buying it.
You are buying it? Okay.
I was going to ask, I'm sorry, what's your name? I didn't catch it.
My name's Jen.
Jen, thank you. Okay. So, with the pool in the building, I know the plan will be for this to be a long-term use, but it's in an area with offices around it. If the swim school were to one day move on, is the building convertible to a conventional office space in there?
Yeah, so we build our pool in-ground, so when we build it, we would dig it out, so that would be fillable at some point if the pool were to ever leave.
Another question, I don't know if this would bear on our decision, but is this development part of a condo unit development actually? I know some structures like this that are grouped together with similar buildings or condos. Would that matter and is this within the provision of the declaration if so?
I believe that this site would be its own, if there's going to be a condominium association, it would just be on this site for those units.
So, there's a master declaration that might affect the ability to...
You know, as you saw, this would be the first anchor, you know, tenant user for the site. So, I would imagine the developer, Lucky Properties, they would, I'm sure they would incorporate everything they need into this. So, they'll control that document. And I did confirm that with both a design representative from Lucky and other members of the swim school, that these buildings are, they can be reconfigured to regular office after the fact. So, it has happened.
And is this within the boundaries of our Northwest gen?
This is in the district.
Maybe I missed it. How many jobs are you expecting to create?
Typically, we employ around 30 part-time and full-time employees, so a mix of both.
Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll open it up to anybody out in the audience. Anybody have any comments? Okay. If there are no other questions, we will close the public hearing and we will take this issue up at our meeting at 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We all set?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna call our seven o'clock meeting to order if everybody would please rise for a invocation read by Administrator Kellums.
Family, Father, we praise you for who you are and what you've done for us, Lord. Father, in these changing times, we ask that you keep our country, our state, and our community safe and healthy. We pray for our leaders, Father. Lord, thank you that we are fellow workers with you and as you, Lord, that makes all things possible. Lord, you're supposed to make wise decisions in the assignment of our roles in the township. Help us to function as a unit in which each part cooperates with the others and a unity brought about by the Holy Spirit. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Lord, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Porter would note that all three trustees are present. First time on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 19th. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve our minutes from the April 19th, 2022 regular meeting.
A second?
Motion is second and further discussion. Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
I move we approve the minutes from the April 25th, 2022 special meeting.
A second?
Motion is second and further discussion. Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any?
I don't believe so, sir.
No public comments. Okay, next item on the agenda is planning and zoning report.
Yes, sir. All right, first item I have is a resolution for zoning case 2022-07 MA. Let me bring that up for you right now. Uh, maybe, maybe we're just geared to. What's that? Hopefully? Nope, that's not it. I apologize. Um, I don't know why it's not on my screen. Let's see.
Skylar, I think I saw.
There we go, let's go with that one. Okay. Okay, I have a draft resolution prepared approving the applicant's proposal for case number 2022-07 MA. And it reads, "A resolution approving a major adjustment to a PUD case number 2022-07 MA for Kenwood Swim School LLC in Sycamore Township and dispensing with a second reading." Uh, this is standard language for the approval of a major adjustment as well as the exhibit listing the staff, the staff recommended conditions in Exhibit A. And I'll fix the spacing there for Mr. Barbier's signature.
You have a motion.
I move we approve the resolution as presented.
A second?
Any further discussion? Uh, I just want to say, I like the use. I like the fact that you, you know, with the shared parking situation and the fact that you're off-cycle with office, I think really is a great, great fit for that property. And we look forward to having you in the community.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
Having said that, Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Okay, this, uh, this resolution's being printed out now, so when we adjourn, it'll be available for, for signatures afterwards. All right, getting us back on track. Uh, so I do have two resolutions, one for nuisance property and then for junk vehicle. These are both on the same property at 11962 Fifth Avenue. Uh, the first resolution for, uh, let me just read the resolution. Resolution providing for unauthorized removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 11962 Fifth Avenue, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45249. And I'll skip to the pictures for you real quick. Uh, as you can see, garbage, trash, and debris accumulated all across the site.
Has there been any contact with the property owner?
Uh, this is a, this is a repeat property.
I was gonna say, this is definitely a frequent flyer.
This is a frequent flyer. We have, we have lots of contact, but, but no results.
I will move we approve the resolution as presented regarding removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris.
A second?
Motion is second and further discussion. Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
All right, this resolution is for multiple junk vehicles on the same property. And it reads, "A resolution providing for the removal of junk vehicles in Sycamore Township, Hamilton County, and, and the proper disposal, storage, and impoundment of motor vehicles by implementing the procedure set forth in Sycamore Township Resolution Number 2012-14 and the sections 505.173, 505.85, and 505.1871 of the IR Vice Code." Uh, we have again, four junk vehicles, four Taurus Honda Accord Jeep Grand Cherokee wagon and a Saturn sedan. Vehicles are all out of date. Uh, they appear inoperable. Uh, we've noted that they haven't moved in quite some time. This car's out of the right of way. Let's see. We do receive, we have received complaints on these. Both, both of these violations stem from, from complaints from the neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I will move we approve the resolution as presented regarding the junk vehicles.
A second?
Motion is second and further discussion. Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
We have a, a possible applicant for a zone change along Montgomery Road. Uh, it's the property that we've, uh, looked at across from Mercedes-Benz in the past for multifamily. Uh, this is a potential office user who has had a preliminary meeting with myself and Mr. Kellums. They are, uh, in accordance with the township zoning resolution, uh, they are going to hold a public open house. They've decided to host that them, uh, themselves instead of utilizing our facilities. They're gonna be hosting that at the, um, the Kenwood Country Club, which there's, there's nothing in our code that, that would prohibit that. Uh, that open house, uh, will be advertised on the township website. Uh, we will be reaching out to residents in the surrounding area. Uh, that is proposed to be on May 19th. And I believe the meeting time is six o'clock. So, uh, if that changes, I'll, I'll update that on the township website. We will have preliminary plans on, on the site as well for that open house. So, there has been no formal settlement at this time.
Okay. Good.
That's all I have tonight.
Any questions?
Okay, we're gonna call our seven o'clock meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for our invocation read by Administrator Kellums.
Family, Father, we praise you for who you are and what you've done for us, Lord. Father, in these changing times, we ask that you keep our country, our state, and our community safe and healthy. We pray for our leaders, Father. Lord, thank you that we are fellow workers with you and as you, Lord, makes all things possible. Lord, we're supposed to make wise decisions in the assignment of our roles in the township. Help us to function as a unit in which each part cooperates with the others and a unity brought about by the Holy Spirit. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thirdly, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Porter would note that all three trustees are present. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 19th. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve our minutes from the April 19th, 2022 regular meeting.
A second?
Motion is second and any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
I move we approve the minutes from the April 25th, 2022 special meeting.
I second.
Motion is second and any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any?
I don't believe so, sir.
No public comments, okay. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning report.
Yes, sir. All right, first item I have is a resolution for zoning case 2022-07MA. Let me bring that up for you right now. Uh, maybe, maybe we're just geared to. What's that? Hopefully? Nope, that's not it. Uh, I apologize. Um, I don't know why it's not on my screen. Let's see.
Skylar, I think I saw.
There we go, let's go with that one. Okay. Okay, I have a draft resolution prepared approving the applicant's proposal for case number 2022-07MA. And it reads, "A resolution approving a major adjustment to a PUD, case number 2022-07MA, for Kenwood Swim School LLC in Sycamore Township and dispensing with a second reading." Uh, this is standard language for the approval of a major adjustment as well as the exhibit listing the staff, uh, the staff recommended conditions in Exhibit A. And I'll fix the spacing there for Mr. Barbier's signature.
Here's the motion.
I move we approve the resolution as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion? Uh, I just wanna say, I like the use. I like the fact that you, you know, with the shared parking situation and the fact that you're off-cycle with office, I think really is a great, great fit for that property. And, uh, we look forward to having you in the community.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
Having said that, Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
Okay, this, uh, this resolution's being printed out now, so when we adjourn, it'll be available for, uh, for signatures afterwards. All right, getting us back on track. Uh, so I do have two resolutions, uh, one for nuisance property, uh, and then for junk vehicle. These are both on the same, uh, property at 11962 Fifth Avenue. Uh, the first resolution for, uh, hi, let me just read the resolution. Resolution providing for unauthorized removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 11962 Fifth Avenue, Sycamore Township, Ohio, 45249. And I'll skip to the pictures for you real quick. Uh, as you can see, garbage, trash, and debris accumulated all across the site.
Has there been any contact with the property owner?
Uh, this is a, this is a repeat property.
I was gonna say, this is definitely a frequent flyer.
This is a frequent flyer. We have, we have lots of contact, but, but no results.
I will move we approve the resolution as presented regarding removal of vegetation, vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris.
I second.
Motion is second and any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
All right, this resolution is for, uh, multiple junk vehicles on the same property. And it reads, "A resolution providing for the removal of junk vehicles in Sycamore Township, Hamilton County, and, uh, and the proper disposal, storage, and impoundment of motor vehicles by implementing the procedure set forth in Sycamore Township Resolution Number 2012-14 and the sections 505.15, uh, 173, 505.85, and 505.1871 of the IR Vice Code." Uh, we have again, uh, four junk vehicles, uh, four Taurus Honda Accord, Jeep Grand Cherokee wagon, and a Saturn sedan. Vehicles are all out of date. Uh, they appear inoperable. Uh, we've noted that they haven't moved in quite some time. This car's out of the right-of-way. We do receive, we have received complaints on these. Both, both of these, uh, violations stem from, from complaints from the neighborhood. Okay?
Any other questions?
No.
Well, I will move we approve the resolution as presented regarding the junk vehicles.
I second.
Motion is second and any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
We have a, uh, a possible applicant for a zone change along Montgomery Road. Uh, it's the property that we've, uh, looked at across from Mercedes-Benz in the past for multifamily. Uh, this is a potential office user, uh, who, uh, has had a preliminary meeting, uh, with myself and, uh, Mr. Kellums. They are, uh, in accordance with the township zoning resolution, uh, they are going to hold a public open house. They've decided to host that them, uh, themselves instead of utilizing our facilities. They're gonna be hosting that at the, uh, um, the Kenwood Country Club, which there's, there's nothing in our code that, that would prohibit that. Uh, that open house, uh, will be, uh, advertised on the township website. Uh, we will be reaching out to, uh, residents in the, the surrounding area. Uh, that is proposed to be on May 19th. And I believe the meeting time is six o'clock. So, uh, if that changes, I'll, I'll update that on the township website. We will have preliminary plans on, on the site as well for that open house. There has been no formal supplemental at this time.
Okay. Good.
That's all I have tonight.
Any questions? Okay, Sheriff, Sheriff Patrol report sergeant?
The only thing I have to report on today is a follow-up on the Kenwood Town Center robbery. I'm pleased to report that CIS is following some leads up. Um, I can't go into any specifics about the leads, but there are leads, so we are making some progress on that case.
Great. Any questions?
Um, I had talked to Mike about possibly utilizing a, uh, one of our floater cars to possibly give the appearance of a presence, especially at that one door. And I know that Louis Vuitton, I talked to-
There's that construction that's going on there too.
Yes. Um, I did talk to, uh, to David Jacoby, and he said that Louis Vuitton is looking at hiring specials to, uh, to work at.
I'm sure we could accommodate that as well. That's probably not a bad idea.
Yeah, so hopefully we can, uh, deter any further craziness there. And I know that they've locked that door and they're bolting down all the other stuff like they used to. A week before this happened, they, everything was cabled.
Right.
And after, a week later?
It's a, it's unfortunately, it's a common theme at the mall. We do spend a lot of time there and still.
Okay, any questions? Uh, EMS and fire chief?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to our wonderful Beth, she bounced off an idea that, um, we were going to hold a car seat day for new moms and infants that, um, I'll be putting it in the newsletter when it goes out for the next, next one, and then we'll have a date set for it, but we're basically gonna offer like a Saturday from like nine to two or 10 to two and, and open it up. People can just come in and have their car seats for their infants either checked or installed based on what they have. We get a lot of requests for it, and a lot of times they just walk in and if the guys are on the run, there's nobody there to do it. Believe it or not, they have to go through a lot of training and be certified for that, and there's only certain guys that do that. Not everybody's allowed to do that.
Interesting.
So, um, this way we can open up to where the technicians are there that day, and then we can advertise it so they can come in and-
That's great.
It's great.
Everything's done. Great for new parents and dumb, dumb grandparents like me.
Grandparents also.
Yeah. All the above, so.
Well, one question, I, I think it's a great idea too, but are, are we taking on any liability as to that we need to be concerned about? You guys are experts in this, I know, but do we need a release sign or anything? Larry?
I don't think we're taking on that.
We, we haven't, we've been doing it for 10-plus years and we haven't had one. The, the guys that, uh, I mean, it's not that difficult, but when they go through the recertification, they do it through Children's Hospital. And when they go through the recertification, it's basically just teaching them the different styles of car seats and just how they hook up. Some of them are terrible. I mean, it's, it's not like you just put a seatbelt over the kid and you're done, ready to go. I mean, they got those connector things and, you know, that just comes apart and everything, and, and there's a trick to it. And they, they learn all that, so when they do it, they can teach the parents the right way to do it. Cause a lot of parents come in with a car seat in the box and, and, and they say, "We have no idea what to do with this thing," you know, so we, uh, we have to show them how to, how to hook it up, how to do it, in case they have to transfer it to a different car or something like that, so. Uh, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty good program, and at least it's in there right.
Yeah, great. That's good.
So, that's all I got.
Okay, any questions? Uh, roads maintenance and recreation report, Mr. Kellums?
The first thing I have is, uh, we met on site, uh, at Becktoe Park with, uh, the gentleman from, uh, Food Truck Expo, uh, trying to finalize a lot of the details for the food truck rally. Seems to be a lot of excitement about that throughout the, uh, community. Uh, so we are, uh, co-sponsor of that event. As of now, we are, uh, supplying the stage and, uh, security, and there will be several maintenancemen there for the weekend. Uh, that's, that's gonna be about our extent of it besides helping them with advertisements. So, he had, he already has 40 trucks signed up, so it's supposed to be a huge turnout.
Great.
He's expecting a large turnout now. As always, it's always weather dependent, so we'll see what happens.
Do we, so you've reconfigured that, I think, right? You've moved the stage?
Yeah, we moved the stage from, uh, from the original configuration trying to, uh, cause we're trying to figure out how to get all the trucks in and out, off the path without going through the fields.
Exactly.
And tearing everything up. So, it's gonna be challenging if it rains, very challenging.
So where are you thinking of putting the stage at the park relative to everything?
The stage will be close to the entrance off of Tudor Court. So it'll be on the side with everybody in the field facing that way, and the trucks will be around the path.
Okay.
Everybody will be on the inside. So that way we'll be able to utilize our parking, you know, all our parking lots. I've already talked with Deer Park High School, I've got a colleague, St. Sager, will use this too. He is, uh, he's going to be supplying, uh, the buses for transportation also, so we won't be doing that. We're just, uh, supplying the parking lots for, coordinating that, so.
I like the finances of this.
Yeah, I do too.
I hope we have good weather.
Yeah, I do too. I think if we have good weather, it's gonna be a great event. Uh, some good bands, uh, so a lot of excitement about it, it's gonna be great.
Karen's definitely excited about it.
Yeah. So, other than that, uh, let's talk about the Snyder Road Bridge. As I told you, uh, we had made contact with them, uh, asked them to get with another company to, uh, check out the cost of that because of the difference between what the engineer estimate was and what the first company came back with, uh, after going through a different company, excuse me, which is the MP, Dora Company. The estimated township cost, final cost for, for that is 160,000. That is TIF eligible, but that is your decision as to whether you want to participate in that. That is the cost for each township, that's not the whole cost.
Is that, is that engineering inclusive?
No, that's the construction cost.
And what's this fancy bobble on the bridge going to look like?
Well, it's going to say Sycamore Township can have our handle marked.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I brought it to a meeting before, we've seen it already. I can send it out to everybody.
Same as what you showed before.
Yeah, same as what I showed before.
Why don't you send it to us again?
So, uh, I'd, you know, I've talked to, uh, ODOT about this project. Uh, we are getting sidewalks on our side of the bridge for ODOT so we can connect, uh, up to Kemper. You know, we've been wanting to, there was no point in putting sidewalks on side before because you didn't have anything on the bridge.
Right.
So now that they're reconstructing the bridge, we're gonna get sidewalks on our side, uh, we can go to the subdivision and up to the corner.
So from Sterling Run to Kemper?
Mm-hmm.
From Sterling Run to Kemper?
From Sterling Run to Kemper.
Okay.
Uh, we still are, we have a grant application in again right now for sidewalks on Kemper. Uh, that was supposed to be in in March, then they changed it to April, now they're saying May, so I don't know when we're gonna get a decision on that. Uh, this, we have put in for the, uh, this is a different one. Uh, this is a safety grant that we put in for this time, so.
Okay.
I think we've got a great grant put together, but, uh, you know, it all depends on the competition, what kind of projects are in there against us.
Right.
We're still waiting to see what happens there, but I think sidewalks on Kemper are, are really needed. Uh, you know, we've extended it up, in this application, we've extended it up Soulsman all the way to School Road, uh, so that we could connect to, you know, a school road project later on.
Right.
Up Snyder Road, uh, all down Kemper over to Deerfield, so it connects two parks, connects CHCA and, and community, the residential piece of the community there, so I think it's a great project.
I agree.
We'll, we'll see what happens.
So the, the sidewalks are going in regardless of what we do with the time?
So the bridge is not at our cost, obviously, the sidewalks on Snyder will be. Uh, and that this is, this is all aesthetics. This is, uh, the fence and the facing of the bridge.
But if we had decided not to do this, on the other hand, they would put in chain-link fence like they have now, correct?
Yes.
So there would still be a fence, just not that big expensive.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll still be a fence for sure.
I, I still think this is a terrible idea to spend money on this, but the board has voted to do it, so.
I don't believe we, I don't believe we formally voted to do it, I think we were waiting to see what, uh, what the new costs were.
We voted on it when we thought it was-
Exactly.
We were told it was 100.
Yeah, exactly.
And they came back and said, "Oh no, we were wrong, it's 200."
200, yeah.
And I said, "Well, that seems a little outrageous." I know everything's gone up, inflation, especially in construction and, and pricing, uh, so I asked them to check it, so it's, it's 160.
When the meeting with the board voted two to one on it, you said it was 150. I don't remember talking about 200 or 100, but, anyway. Maybe we can revisit it if others are uncomfortable too.
When do you need to have an answer?
Well, I'll talk to them, but probably by the next meeting, I'll send that out to you.
Okay.
Cause they have to-
Let's, let's do that. Let's, let's look at the-
I agree.
Let's look at the revised pricing and we'll take a look at it.
Pricing, we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
The sidewalk, we know we're planning on, uh, being heavy on sidewalks in the northern area. You know, we've, we've really covered the south pretty well lately with Coogamale, Sycamore.
Montgomery.
Montgomery. You know, we've all, we've done Galbraith, uh, we're doing the last piece of Montgomery. Uh, we have a, a resolution for engineering for that tonight, uh, so I think we can, uh, we've been helped tremendously down here by grants, so.
Yep.
You know, we've been trying for several years to get grants up there, so.
Okay.
That means a lot. We do have TIF up there for the sidewalks, uh, too, for, for our match on our grants, so. I just wanted to bring that to you and let you know where we're at, so we can, uh, we'll have a decision on that soon. Uh, we also had to trash bash since our last meeting at Becktoe. What is that different than the one we had up north when it snowed? It was 80 degrees that winter. The guys were so busy, it was unbelievable. They pulled out 33 dumpsters in a weekend, most we've done, uh, maybe ever. I don't even have all the numbers yet back from, uh, from different companies that helped us, you know, for the, uh, uh, for the waste, the e-waste and for the hazardous materials, but those guys were busy all day, it was non-stop, so it was very successful. Something else I'd like to talk about is, uh, if you remember, we used to, we had a resolution about dumping in roads, problems with dumping in roads. We, uh, would find the homeowner that was having the work done, because if you didn't necessarily catch the person that was driving the truck that's working for him, you can't really find the company or the truck driver, cause you, you don't have the proof. So we, we were finding, uh, homeowners and they would pass it on to their contractors. And after doing that for a few years and having that in all our newsletters, time at the time, at the time, they didn't really, uh, put a damper on that, and now it's, since we've quit doing that, uh, it's gotten a lot worse. We're getting it all the time now, especially in this year, it's already started to, you know, with spring here, you know, they're dumping their mulch, they're dumping their gravel, they're dumping their dirt, they're scooping it up on roads that are brand-new with, you know, Bobcats, backhoes. We've got a lot of money invested in these roads. And, uh, you know, you ask them, "Well, why didn't you dump it in their driveway?" Well, we don't want to tear the driveway up.
Exactly.
We don't want you to tear the road up either. So I think this is something that we have to revisit, whether we talked to Larry about what we can do there, what's legal, what's not legal.
I'd like Larry to put on it.
I think we need to do something with this though.
I'd also like to know if, if any other community is, uh, how they're enforcing it, just-
I can't tell you if there's any other community really doing it.
Maybe we ought to reach out to the other ones and just-
Talk to the Sheriff's Department. I mean, I know dumping in, in, in the right-of-way is an obstruction, you know, and our passive policy has become, "Go over and tell them, we need you to move it." Okay, well, the road's still getting torn up.
Yeah, it's getting, getting destroyed.
But it's one thing if the homeowner does it themselves and you could find them. If a contractor does it and they don't have direct control over it and didn't order it, that is the question as to whether we could do anything.
I can assure you, if they dumped it in the road, the-
They were told to.
Customer told them to put it in the road, not on the driveway.
The other thing is dumpsters. You know, we're back to that again, with contractors putting dumpsters in the street, and they tear up already.
Oh, yeah.
They're heavy. We just had one, they tore out the driveway, put the dumpster in the road through the concrete in the driveway, the dumpster feet sank right into asphalt, I mean, you know?
Didn't they put small two-by-sixes underneath the wheels and it's still all-
Yeah, the two-by-sixes just sunk into the pavement.
Yeah.
Can we tow those off when that happens? I mean, that's a heavy project to do, but.
I'm sure we can find somebody. We don't have the capability to do that.
Holding up basically.
Most companies wouldn't either.
Yeah.
But if Larry could check on that, see what we can do.
I mean, that'd be a full, that'd be a full-
I mean, obviously, yeah, and obviously those are owned by a dumpster company, so they put them there.
Yep.
That's different than, "Who delivered your rock? Who delivered your mulch?"
Yes. Larry, if you could, if you could research that a little bit for us?
I will.
Cause we really need to get a handle on this. I mean, we, we have way too much money in our roads to get destroyed by people who pay no attention to the rules.
They just wanna use the road as a construction site. And I'll send you what we were using before, so you can look at that.
Okay.
Will we have something about that in our newsletter that's coming out?
We, we have.
We have?
We have before.
Multiple times.
We will in this coming-
In this coming one?
Yes.
Good. I've never done a resolution on that before, but I'll, I'll check to see if there's something we can do. Okay. I mean, it's certainly an obstruction.
If it's a median right-of-way, what they probably usually do, what I've seen in the past is what they'll do is they'll park, they'll put it where cars normally would park. So the road is still passable, so it's not completely obstructing the road. That's how they kinda get around that.
Mm-hmm.
The hazardous material doesn't necessarily fit the, you know, putting hazardous material on the roadway doesn't necessarily fit.
Gotcha. Okay.
Uh, next I have a resolution. Uh, this is about, this is for engineering for Gideon Lane Culver Project. If you remember, we went out for, uh, consultant selection on this at the same time we did the, the one for the Montgomery Road sidewalks. We've already awarded the Montgomery Road sidewalk, uh, contract. Uh, we also have a, uh, OPWC grant for 50% of this project, though it does not cover engineering, it does cover construction. So a resolution authorizing contract with Carpenter-Marty Transportation Corporation for Engineering Services for the Gideon Lane Culver Project, dispensing with a second reading and declaring an emergency.
I move we approve the resolution as presented.
I second.
Motion is second and any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwedman?
Aye.
Mr. Weedman?
Aye.
And then our projects are moving along. We have a meeting with the engineer for Montgomery Road, uh, we're getting, moving on that for those, that sidewalk project, Plainfield and Marchview, uh, is moving along. We are, uh, the contractor, in case any of you get phone calls, the contractor has pulled off for two weeks against my will and my arguments, uh, to go somewhere else, say that they're ahead of schedule and they have to finish something somewhere else. I said, "Well, you know, not a good idea." So, they say two. I'll be happily surprised if it's two. So, in the meantime, uh, our phones may be ringing off the wall because, uh, the streets tore up, the larks are tore up, and there's not gonna be anybody there.
Sounds like you're pretty influential among them.
Yeah, they don't, they're pretty scared of us.
So we should give them your cell number if they call and you can-
Give them my office number. That's all I have for runs and recreation. Let's see if I has a question.
I, I have a couple of questions here. Um, okay, uh, playgrounds. I, I had a conversation with Jason Petty about this, about possibly looking at Bob Meyer Park. There's some playground, uh, equipment pieces there that are apparently dangerous and roped off, so he's looking at, uh, whether it might make sense to replace that at some point or repair as best we can and do that. But I had a resident ask me about that and then also ask me about the playground back here behind the maintenance building. What's the status of everything back here?
So we're, we're working on all of that. Uh, we've, we are going to have, we're, we're working with two different companies that have been providing us, uh, drawings and pricing of what they're doing. We've been working on that last week and this week, so we are getting close on putting that in back here. Uh, Bob Meyer, we have been working on, we've been having a hard time finding parts- Uh, Bob Meyer, we have been working on, we've been having a hard time finding parts. So if we can't find the parts, we're gonna have to replace it. And the one that we pulled out of here, we are looking to reassemble at High Point Park.
Okay. I will tell you, Jason did a, a good job of reaching out to some people in the neighborhoods over around Sturbridge about the equipment there, if it does need replacement or repairs, to whether it's age appropriate, as to what's there now versus maybe engineering it for younger kids too, because it's kind of dangerous for them now. Uh, another question I had, the, uh, Kenwood Gardens.
Yep.
Sign has been gone for a long time. What's, what's the story?
I'll have to check on that.
It's been missing for months now.
Yeah.
I figured it was out for repair like a year or two ago.
It was for repair and then we decided to get a new one and I thought that had been ordered. I'll, I'll, I'll check with Jason on that.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, that park's getting used with graders.
It sure is.
Sure is.
I was over there Friday night, they were lined up across the, uh, all the parking was gone in, in graders, in our park. They were parking in the back of the Mexican restaurant, walking over. The line was across the front, across the side, out the door. I said, this is unbelievable. They were sitting all over in the park.
It's good.
It's a popular spot.
We love it.
They were everywhere. They, I mean, they were just pouring in non-stop. And the drive-through was full from the window around the building to the door the whole time we were there, non-stop.
Love it.
So that's great to see.
Yeah.
Tracy, do you keep a close eye on, uh, that, that strip shop?
I was just trying to make sure everything's going okay.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Do we know what the flavor of the month is or, or no?
He's tried all the flavors.
Every month.
Every month.
We put a top man on this to make sure that place goes well, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Law Director report, Larry?
Yeah, I noticed that we have a, a resolution coming up having to do with the ARPA funds and I just wanted to explain that the reason we have to have this resolution and be another one before we spend any funds, that, uh, the township is required to adopt federal guidelines because this is federal money. The last federal money that was received was distributed through the state in accordance with an emergency and it wasn't necessary to adopt a federal guideline for those. But we have to, and that's the purpose for this next resolution.
Okay. So let me read that next resolution.
Authorizing increase in micro purchase threshold and adopting uniform guidance procurement policy. Should I say a resolution? Larry?
Wait, you read what's fine.
Okay.
I move we approve the resolution as presented.
My second.
Motion is secondly, further discussion. Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay, next item is Administrator Report. We're still up, Mr. Callens.
So the first thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, gas aggregation again. Uh, you know, I came, uh, to you and said that the prices are outrageous, uh, we're not looking to sign up or we're hoping that by the end of summer, something breaks. Uh, last week, uh, Rich from Energy Alliance has gotten back to me and said, hey, there's a, been a big turn lower this week, uh, maybe we can get somewhere, it's moving in the right direction. Well, four days later, it went back up, it's well over seventy. We have never been anywhere close to that fifty-six mark that we talked about. Uh, you know, he says in his twenty years, he's never seen it this volatile, that is, so there's really no reason to, for us to do anything at this point, I don't believe. Uh, whether it ever gets down to that fifty-six, your guess is as good as mine.
When we start drilling it, well.
Wow, when's that gonna be?
Soon to find out.
Couple of years for sure.
Probably.
So I just wanted to let you know where we're at with that, uh, we're still working on it. I communicate with him a couple of times a week.
We have, uh, I know we have something on our website about that. Someone asked me about it today though, and when I went to find that, I couldn't, and I had to go to the township's Facebook page to find where we had promoted it on there. Can you talk with Beth to make sure, Beth's probably listening now, of course, maybe we can make sure it's featured on the homepage again or mentioned in the newsletter, so people will see it. Thanks.
That we're, you mean that we're, that we're reverting to the, the Duke?
Act to Duke.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
We've got a long explanation of it on the, on the website, it's just kind of hidden away. Or maybe I didn't look well enough.
No. I mean, the, you know, the more articles we get, the more it gets pushed down.
Yep.
We just bring it back up.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a gas aggregation link in the top menu, I think somewhere, so I thought it would be under that and it was.
It was not.
Yeah, so maybe we just add that.
Okay, we'll make sure it gets there too then.
Yeah. Speaking of gas as a sort, by the way, this was probably under Roads and Maintenance, but the Alwoods Sewage Project, I understand there was, that there was a meeting, uh, for some presentation as to that. What happened with that and where is that now?
Well, it was a good long presentation. It was, I think every resident on Alwoods and some of Keller were all here. Basically, it came down to, we don't want what you've proposed here, we need to find a, a new way to do it. Uh, Duke is looking at a couple of, uh, different alternatives to come back to us. They've asked that if, uh.
Duke or MSD?
MSD.
MSD, that, uh, if we're going to, uh, there was something official from the township, basically, we're not gonna do that.
And so we're, so, uh, I received a, an email from Chelsea Thomas at MSD, uh, earlier in the week, or, or, end of last week, and she said that their, their engineering is going to look at that proposal of using the Friends.
The Friends.
Property and running a lateral line back with the chemical back to, back to the intersection. But, uh, she didn't know if it was gonna work because we don't really know what utilities are under there, so.
Right.
And that's, that could be a, yeah.
And that's the first thing they need to look at.
That's gonna be, could potentially be a big problem.
Were they gonna look at being around the corner on the same piece of property?
They're, they're also, yeah.
On Keller.
They're also looking at that, but they had a lot of, much doubt that that, that would work because of the topography there.
Because of the topography.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Well, at least they're working on it.
Yep.
So next, I'd like to ask for a motion to advertise, uh, for the HVAC improvements for Station ninety-three. As you remember, we went out, uh, for engineering for this to replace the system that, uh, really has not worked well since day one when it was put in the geothermal system that's up there and go to a more traditional, uh, four-stair split system. And, uh, so we, we've gotten the engineering back, we've gotten the specs back, we're ready to advertise. Uh, this can be, uh, TIF dollars also, and for everything in there to be taken out and the new system put in, we're looking at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's the engineer estimate.
Tracy, does that include the community room?
Yep.
It does. It's the community room and the whole firehouse.
So do they have to remove those thermal wells?
No.
They can leave, you don't like me.
Thermal wells would stay in the ground where they come up into the room, the utility room there.
Close it off.
They'll just stand and cap.
Yep.
And then that, that liquid comes out of there. Everything up on mezzanine, if you've been in their firehouse, you've seen the big handlers and the mezzanine, that all comes out and, uh, there'll be, uh, how many systems was there gonna be?
There was five, I believe, but there's still one, there's still gonna be one in the mezzanine, but the thermal wells don't.
Yeah, so you'll have split systems for different areas.
Good.
So the community room will have their own, which has always been a problem. Uh, and all the firehouse, I believe the firehouse itself has four or five systems and then the three front offices will be a self-contained system in the roof, uh, in the ceiling of each one of those.
Okay.
But, uh, because we can basically utilize most all the ductwork except to those three rooms. And so that's why we're going with a, a self-contained system rather than tearing out all the ceilings and then putting ductwork and starting over there.
And also.
It's a lot of money, but that's, that's, has not worked right since day one.
Yep.
It also takes care of the ventilation problem in the bathrooms. We were, we were actually bidding out at one time to get separate vents put in because the bathrooms don't vent at all.
Okay.
But, um, the engineer found the, the fault with why they weren't doing that and it was all tied into that heating air conditioning.
Okay.
So it'll fix that too.
Good. And that's all TIF eligible.
Yes.
Okay.
So you need a motion to advertise.
I'm just doing a motion to advertise.
For what specifically?
Uh, for HVAC improvements for Station ninety-three.
I move we advertise for HVAC improvements for Station ninety-three.
My second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
We already did that resolution.
Yeah, I think that's it for me.
Purchasers are over five thousand?
We have none.
Thank you very much.
That's hard to believe, but we do have.
Thank you very much. Uh, Fiscal Officer report, bills and receipts.
Yes, we had receipts of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, uh, dispersments of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. A complete listing of all receipts and dispersments is available in the packet.
We have a motion to approve.
I move we approve.
My second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Uh, next item on the agenda is trustee comments. Tracy, have a.
Uh, just as a reminder, I mean, obviously Tracy's mentioned, uh, Mr. Callens mentioned the successful township programs for our document shredding and our, um, trash bashes, but we've also have this weekend, another brush chipping and the compost giveaway, the mulch giveaway, um, eight o'clock at the, at the church. So check your calendars, everyone's out in their yard, everybody's busy out in their yard. We can watch the grass grow and the trees bloom and, uh, so for those that are yardening these days, um, this is a good weekend to take advantage of some other great township services.
Okay. Uh, Tom, what do you think?
Uh, just a reminder, we need to get moving on some things. We need to, uh, get bylaws together for a new citizen finance committee and get that in place. We approved bylaws for a new parks or special events committee or whatever we're calling